Okay, I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen, and I'd like to invite everyone in the audience to rise with us and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have in our packet open session minutes from February 12th, 2018. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Mr. Karen, will you accept the minutes after the first session is written?
And February 15th, open session as written.
So Selectman Smidely has motion for both minutes from February 12th and February 15th. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Singling at Selectman Keen, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? The minutes pass. So we have a crowded meeting this evening, and it's crowded for really good reasons. Not least of which is, we have quite a few public safety officers here for many different reasons. And that includes us as a Board of Selectmen and as a community acknowledging some really neat distinctions that were bestowed on two of our public safety officials last week by the Lawrence Exchange Club. I know that Lieutenant Lennon is here from the Police Department. We did have a distinguished gentleman from our Police Department acknowledged, William Brush. I don't know if Lieutenant Lennon would like to approach the podium, and you don't have to go into as much detail, I suppose, as Chief Gray did, but we-
Can you keep it under an hour? Officer Brush was awarded the 2017 Officer of the Year Award for a situation he was involved in. He was the first responding officer to a call of a subject who was cutting himself. Officer Brush arrived at the house, the subject came out of the house, was approaching Officer Brush. Officer Brush was faced with a deadly force situation. He went for his firearm, and during this time, the subject kept approaching him. And during this time, two family members came out of the house and came in the background of the suspect approaching Officer Brush. Officer Brush put himself in further peril by holstering his firearm and going to less lethal force with his taser. We don't always use the taser because if they approach quickly and it fails, then the officer's gonna be hurt or killed. Officer Brush put himself in peril. He used the taser, engaged it, and unfortunately, as happens often, the taser did not work during the first round. Officer Brush was able to cycle through and fight a second round with the taser and subdued the subject and cuffed him while other officers arrived at the scene. Luckily, he remained unscathed out of this incident. The subject who was approaching him was taken for counseling, and the family and everyone was satisfied with the results and happy with Officer Brush's actions for that. He does great work all the time, and this was an amazing situation. He did a great job. Thank you, Officer Brush.
So last Thursday, several hundred people, including quite a few public safety officials from Lawrence, Andover, Methuen, gathered along with folks from North Andover to recognize, among others, Officer Brush. And so we thought it was important that as a community, we invite folks from the Police Department as well as Officer Brush and his family, because, of course, it's because of your efforts that our community is kept as safe as it is. So Officer Brush, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I have a citation for you. Let me read the note. It is a certificate of accomplishment presented to you, Officer William Brush, for being recognized as a North Andover Police Officer of the Year by the Lawrence Exchange Club. Congratulations on your achievement, presented this evening, February 26th, 2018, in the Board of Selectmen. I'm looking at it, I think it's signed. So that's okay, I'll- that's really important.
Can I get my free coffee?
I know, exactly. Thank you, and thank you to your family. So the Lawrence Exchange Club doesn't just recognize police officers, it recognizes the heroism and activities of our firefighters here in the Merrimack Valley. And this year, we had a gentleman named Neil Patonod who was recognized, and Chief McCarthy, Armel Nikas, is here this evening to speak. So, thank you, Chief.
Yeah, that was a funny story, wasn't it, Sheldon?
It was a funny story.
So our nominee was Neil Patonod. Neil was not one special event, it's what he does day in and day out for the North Andover Fire Department and North Andover community. Neil is on a lot of different organizations on the fire department, he's on the Honor Guard, he attends all the town parades, events, the 9/11 ceremony. He makes sure that he represents fallen firefighters at their funerals. He's been part of our toy drive in town that's supplied a lot of gifts during the holiday season. Neil's part of our fire education team that goes into the schools and also to the elderly complexes. He's been part of the American Lung Association's past two years, the Climate Fair, and they've raised over $18,000. Neil was part of a fundraiser by a local Girl Scout group that Neil spearheaded and was able to get enough money to buy some equipment for the Fire Department, some athletic equipment. When we moved into the new station, Neil took it upon himself to put up all the old photography that we had here at this station, and if you come in, it's such a beautiful job that he did. So it's what Neil does day in and day out. One of the special things that came to our attention, what Neil did, was while he was out on a medical call, there was an elderly gentleman that was having a diabetic emergency. Neil assisted him at getting his blood sugar back up, but noticed that a lot of food in his home was either not edible or had expired. So the following day, when Neil got off duty, he went to the grocery store and bought an order of groceries for this gentleman and brought it back to his house. And that's just the type of thing that Neil does, day in and day out. Since we gave Neil that award, we've already received two more calls from the public letting me know what Neil did during those calls for service that they required. So it was a great honor to nominate Neil, and Neil's a special person here, so he was our 2017 Exchange Club Firefighter of the Year.
Good job, Neil. So likewise, the Board felt it was important that we recognize, again, our public safety officials for the public, and so Neil, we have a signed citation for you. A certificate of accomplishment presented to you, firefighter Neil Patonod, for being recognized as the North Andover Firefighter of the Year by the Exchange Club of Lawrence. Congratulations on your achievement, presented by the Board of Selectmen, this evening, February 26th, 2018. Thank you. So this was an appropriate opportunity to recognize these two gentlemen, and I don't want the families to feel like they have to be held captive, but it was especially appropriate because on our agenda this evening, as we have right now, Lieutenant Lennon and Joyce Bradshaw here to usher in, you could say, the next generation of public safety officials for our community. We have five police officers who just wrapped up their time at the academy and are ready to join the ranks of some very distinguished gentlemen, clearly. And so with that being said, Lieutenant Lennon, I don't know if you wanted to come back up and tell us a little bit more about what we have before us this evening, and these five fine gentlemen, four fine gentlemen and one fine gentlelady. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you that Chief Gray wanted to be here this evening, but he's sick. I'll have to bring him some chicken soup on the way home. But we have five new graduates from the Police Academy who are all outstanding candidates. They excelled during the academy. We had numerous awards, it was a class of 60, and our five received numerous awards in all types of specialties during this academy. For the graduation ceremony Friday, it was nice that, you know, we represented well. During every time that a special award came up, one of our members was a recipient. And we have two of them who will be starting, they'll be starting on the road because they worked with us full-time as reserves and had field training already. So we'll be able to put them right into the mix in shift rotations. The other three will be trained at the station also for a while, and when they're comfortable, they'll all be placed alone in the regular shift rotation on the road. So at this point, if the officers could come up, will you swear in?
And I think because you're such great achievers and you've done so much that you deserve to be sworn in individually rather than a group. So if none of you have any objections, I will be happy to do that. Okay, so we'll start right here, and if you raise your right hand, repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
Solemnly promise-
Solemnly promise.
And affirm-
And affirm.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Honestly-
Honestly.
Sincerely-
Sincerely.
And impartially-
And impartially.
Perform all the duties-
Perform all the duties.
That are incumbent upon me-
That are incumbent upon me.
As a police officer-
As a police officer.
For the town of North Andover-
For the town of North Andover.
So help me God.
So help me God.
If I'm raising your right hand, repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
Solemnly promise-
Solemnly promise.
And affirm-
And affirm.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Honestly-
Honestly.
Sincerely-
Sincerely.
And impartially-
And impartially.
Perform all the duties-
Perform all the duties.
That are incumbent-
That are incumbent.
Upon me-
Upon me.
As a police officer-
As a police officer.
For the town of North Andover-
For the town of North Andover.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Hello again.
Hello.
Okay, you have your hand raised, okay, aye, state your name.
Aye, you're William Gordon.
Solemnly promise-
Solemnly promise.
And affirm-
And affirm.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully.
Honestly-
Honestly.
Sincerely-
Sincerely.
And impartially-
And impartially.
Perform all the duties-
Perform all the duties.
That are incumbent-
That are incumbent.
Upon me-
Upon me.
As a police officer-
As a police officer.
For the town of North Andover-
For the town of North Andover.
So help me God.
So help me God.
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Daniel Furman.
Solemnly promise-
Solemnly promise.
And affirm-
And affirm.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully.
Honestly-
Honestly.
Sincerely-
Sincerely.
And impartially-
And impartially.
Perform all the duties-
Perform all the duties.
That are incumbent-
That are incumbent.
Upon me-
Upon me.
As a police officer-
As a police officer.
For the town of North Andover-
For the town of North Andover.
So help me God. If I'm raising your right hand and repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Cameron Francis.
Solemnly promise-
Solemnly promise.
And affirm-
And affirm.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully.
Honestly-
Honestly.
Sincerely-
Sincerely.
And impartially-
And impartially.
Perform all the duties-
Perform all the duties.
That are incumbent-
That are incumbent.
Upon me-
Upon me.
As a police officer-
As a police officer.
For the town of North Andover-
For the town of North Andover.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This is the best part of my job, and it's such a proud moment for both for me but for the whole town. You have such wonderful people that are out there, always taking such good care of us. As a longtime resident, and as one of your fellow employees now, I just want to say thank you for everything that everybody does.
Best wishes to all of you, and stay safe.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations, moms.
Great job, Karen. You're on the stage.
It's great to see them get pinned, it's better to see the moms' faces.
I'm sure you will, too.
So we do have, while we file out, I do believe we have folks here from the Master Plan Advisory Committee. I know Everett Kefory is here, and we have some of the consultants as well to provide an update, so I don't know if there was a plan for folks to come up and get you guys seated while this group files out. Mr. Kefory, welcome.
Fong Ahoo in a rock concert, you just don't do that. Thank you, I'm trying to think, it's been a couple months since we were here, correct? And this time, we have Eric Halverson, Eric's actually from RKG, but Eric's actually the one that's been really managing the whole process. And I'll just simply turn it over to him, explain where we are. And I think I'll carry it all the way through to when we should expect the actual master plan, which is coming quicker than most people might realize.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you all, sorry I missed the first briefing, but here now. So yeah, I just wanted to give you all an update, we were with the planning board last week, giving them an update as well, so happy to do that. We are moving along very quickly, I think, as Eric alluded to. We've been working with the Master Plan Committee over the last couple of months. Great committee, I have to say, I've been doing this a while, really one of the best I've been able to work with. So it's been going really well. We've worked with them, as well as the planning board, on three pieces, probably since you last heard, and also since we had the public meeting in November, which I'm not sure if any of you attended, but great meeting, we had close to 300 people come to that meeting. So coming out of that, we took all that public feedback, and we worked with the committee and the planning board and staff to come up with an actual vision statement for the plan, which is really kind of a 25,000-foot level guiding statement for the entire master plan. And then coming off of that, we need to figure out how we're actually gonna get from where we are today to where we want to be in the next 10 or 15 years. So there's kind of a hierarchy of vision statement, then a little bit broader goal statements, and then actual implementation strategies that fall under the different goals. And I think, hopefully, as you all might know, everything's organized into seven different chapters, land use, transportation, housing, open space, natural resources. So within there, there's three to four goals in each of the chapters. Under each one of those goals, there's probably somewhere between four and seven implementation strategies, sort of directing the town. If you do this, this will help you to achieve your goals. So like I said, we've been working over the last month or two with the committee and with the planning board on that. We've received a couple of planning board members' comments so far on the strategy, so we're gonna be revising those based on their comments, leading up to a meeting in about two weeks, on March 15th, over at the high school, again, same place where we had the first one. Where we're actually gonna be presenting the draft vision statement, the draft goals, and the draft strategies to the public, and get their feedback on that. So we're gonna do a brief presentation at the beginning of the meeting, similar to last time, probably no more than 15 minutes. And then we're gonna try to use the bulk of the meeting to actually interact with residents in the public. And we're going to set up a series of stations around the room, like similar to what we did last time. And we're actually gonna ask people, for each of the strategies and the goals that we're talking about, do you agree, do you think this is sort of headed in the right direction? Do you disagree? Are you on the fence, maybe you need more information, or are you just not sure? Then we're gonna ask people to sort of put little sticky dots on yes, no, or maybe. And then we're gonna ask them, if you disagree or you need more information, what more could we provide to you to help clarify your questions? And obviously, staff will be there, members of the Master Plan Committee, and members of the consultant team will be staffing each of those stations. So as people come around and they have questions about different goals and strategies, they can feel free to ask any of us. We've used this method in a couple of other communities, and it's worked really well, especially when people can write down the reasons for how, you know, when they share their preferences on yes, no, or maybe, we can actually get the reasons. And that'll help us then refine the goals and the strategies moving forward. So coming out of that, we'll then work with the committee and the planning board to give them sort of a more finalized vision statement, set of goals instead of strategies, and then we'll work on the implementation piece of it. And then we're looking to wrap up in June with the final plan.
I'll point out that the strategies that Eric and the vision statement will be posted at least a week, we hope a little more on that, prior to the meeting, so the public can review that. And we'll send out announcements as well on that, so the public can review it prior to that public forum and come prepared.
Can you share a bit on how you made a determination as to which, what the vision would be in a case where there are two polar opposite opinions in the public feedback session? Because I went to that meeting, and I thought it was wonderful, it was great, I read a lot of the comments that were posted. But there were certain areas where there were definitely, you know, half the post-its were, "We need more housing," and the other half were, "We need less housing," like just completely opposite points. And I mean, 300 people is a lot for that meeting, but it's a town of 28,000 or 30,000 people, so I'm just curious how you would decide, I guess, which direction if there were two conflicting opinions brought forth.
Yeah, that's a great question. So in this meeting, there, I think there are a couple of areas, housing being one of them, where there still is a little bit of tension or conflict between people who might want more, or people who want less, or people want none. So we have some strategies that we're gonna put out there, and that's the whole reason why we want people to come and then share their opinions on things like that. And we're hoping that we're gonna get more clarity at this next meeting for, basically, the direction, for what people want. I mean, housing's kind of interesting because, and believe me, North Andover is not unique, especially here in Massachusetts, housing is a challenging, it's a challenging topic and a challenging issue. But what we often hear, I think, around housing is, oh, we need more, we need housing that's more affordable for whoever it is. We need family housing in some cases, we need senior housing in some cases. You know, seniors want to downsize out of a large home, they don't want all that maintenance and all that cost. But the question at the end of the day is, in many communities, is where do they go? So if we have people in the community often who say, "Well, we need senior housing, but I don't want any more housing," those two things obviously butt up against each other. So what I think we're gonna try to do at this next meeting is to tease that out a little bit more and say, "Well, okay." I think a lot of people recognize that there is a need, so maybe it's, where does that housing go? Maybe it's not in this part of North Andover, but maybe it's in this part. Or what does it look like, or how big is it, or is it limited to, you know, 55 and older? Or whatever it might be. I think we're gonna try in this meeting to tease a little bit more of that out so we can make those strategies a little bit more specific as we go forward. I will admit, those things still are out there.
But I think you spoke to it really well, it's the type of housing. As you said, the empty nesters are really looking for one level living, but a lot of them want a freestanding house. They want it at a price point of probably about 400 to 500, maybe 600, which is totally different than just somebody out of college a couple of years who might just be looking for a studio.
Yep.
Studios are really desirable, I think, for seniors and for people just starting out. They don't want to live with mom, they don't have a lot of money, but a studio would certainly fit their needs. So I think it's more a question of what type more than just housing in general.
Right, well, I mean, I don't even think housing is the only point, I just use it as an example. But the question was more the methodology and the approach to figure out the recommendation when you have conflicting opinions amongst those that are giving their opinion. How has the, I know that we provided an online, I don't know, place where people, I checked our website and saw how you can put your comments online if you're a citizen who hasn't gone to the meetings, for example. Have we had people utilizing that?
We've had some, not as many as I'd like. A good thing about that is, what I've noticed is those that have submitted things, they get more involved, it's just not, you know, the post-its that you had at the public forum, you know, they have the opportunity to really kind of explain where they're going and be a little more involved with it, so there's a little more substance to the comments.
Just to follow me up on Regina's question, sorry.
Same thing, no question.
There were so many post-its on that wall, and, you know, credit to you guys for going through all those and kind of, you know, filtering those out. But can you talk a little bit about the process, how you did that, and give us a little, maybe a little teaser on what were some of the top ones that you saw there? I mean, we heard housing, but what else was, what are some of the ones that were really, seemed to be hot buttons, or seemed to be, you know, called out by a lot of people?
Yeah, sidewalks and the ability for people to walk was, that might have been the biggest one, I think. Yeah, I think, I forget what John said at the committee meeting, maybe over 100, probably over 100 individual comments just about that.
With half in favor, half against, right?
What was that?
Half in favor, half against sidewalks.
I don't know, it was pretty positive.
Were they all the same color tickets?
Don't say that was one. Figuring out ways to preserve open space while still allowing development in certain locations. Downtown was also another big one, creating a more active and vibrant downtown. Again, on the housing thing, the sort of mixed-use development concept, housing over commercial, was mixed. You know, I think people maybe feel more comfortable about it if it's located here than in other places of town. You know, I think we know as planners, and we've discussed this, I know with staff, that that's, you know, potentially one key piece to revitalizing downtown. Don't say those were a couple.
Anything that surprised you that you, through your experience in other communities, that you didn't see, or that you did see? Or was it pretty common?
I think it was pretty, I think it was pretty common.
It sounds like a very valid question, it sounds like something that if you asked, anyway, in this room, they'd probably come up with that same list of items, so, you know, kudos to the folks. And I was there, and that was a great turnout, and there were a lot of people that were providing a lot of great input.
It was really good.
It was harmless, Paul.
Yeah.
So you've been having frequent meetings with the Master Plan Advisory Committee, and Mr. Stroh is here, and he's one of the members, and so what type of guidance? Because you're the consultants working directly with them, and we assembled quite a diverse group of residents. So what type of guidance are you getting from them, or is there more support that could be provided as far as feedback, or are they just helping you call through the post-its?
Nope, so we call through all the post-its. We use them, oh yeah, we've been using the committee in two ways in particular. You know, one is for a sounding board, so they're the local residents, that's why it's so critical to have a committee, and to also have a committee that's made up of people with diverse backgrounds, which this committee absolutely has. So it's great, we have, you know, people from the development world, we have ex-city planners and lawyers, we have marketing folks, we have all sorts of people on the committee, it's great. So we've been using them as sort of a local sounding board, so when we bring the goals to them or the vision to them, you know, we're saying, they've obviously read all the feedback that we've put together from that- obviously read all the feedback that we've put together from that meeting, and they take that, and then they sort of put their North Andover lens on it and say, "Yeah, I think this is what people mean, and I think this is where that should go, and that's what people mean when they're saying that." Right, we're not from here, so it's great to have them, in addition to staff, for that. And then, they've also been doing almost all the outreach efforts, and they've been doing a tremendous job. I think that's totally the reason why there were close to 300 people at that first meeting, with the amount of work that the committee put in. So, they've been in, just a great sounding board. I mean, two weeks ago, on that Thursday night, we were here for three to three and a half hours going through the goals and the strategy. So, it's not a half-hour discussion, it's very lengthy and often, you know, conflicting opinions on, you know, how we want to go forward, so it's great.
So, what, so what happens when this is done, and we have this crafted, and now it's up to us for implementation? Can we, how do we call on your expertise? Because the other part of this is, you've helped other communities craft this, but its value is only in its implementation, right? So, how can you help us get it from that document to reality? Can you address that at all for us?
Sure. So, one thing that we hope will make it a little bit easier is, in addition to the goals and the strategies, we'll put together sort of an implementation matrix that will organize those strategies. It'll talk about the timeframe in which the town might want to think about trying to implement that strategy, a primary, either it's a person, or a board, or a committee who would be responsible for taking charge of that, and then, sort of, secondary partners who you'd want to involve in those implementation decisions. And then, where we can, we usually try to put up, you know, I say a cost, but it might be a $1 through $4 sign or something like that, so you can just try to at least start to see what might cost more than other things. So, that'll be one thing that hopefully will be a useful tool going forward. The other thing that we will recommend to you, and you'll see it in the master plan, and I'll probably talk about it more as we go through, is trying to maybe solidify the master plan committee into transitioning that into like an implementation committee, if that's something the town is interested in doing. This way, you, you kind of have somebody, in addition to the planning board, who sort of owns that master plan, is looking at it really closely. I mean, the planning board is doing a lot, you know, in addition to the master plan, so it's nice to kind of have a group that can actually own that, whatever, meet once a month, talk about it. And then, what I've seen in other communities is, they'll designate people on that committee as sort of liaisons, who might come before the board of selectmen, who might come before the planning board, come before the conservation commission, especially during goal-setting time, if you all do that here. They can sort of gently remind you, "Hey, don't forget about the master plan, we're in year two, here's what the master plan says for year two." So, those are just some, some quick ideas.
Great.
Getting into the deep dives.
I can, sure.
Yeah, something that we hadn't planned on, but they, the consultants had proposed doing what they're calling a deep dive and concentrating on certain areas, I'll let Eric explain that.
Sure. So, there were a couple of topics, as I mentioned, that came up kind of over and over again. So, what we wanted to do was just, call it deep dive, not to be misleading, because some of them are only a page or three pages, but there are almost going to be kind of inserts that will go into the different chapters. So, one example is the water ship in that district, there's a lot about that, so it's kind of a one-page insert that talks about that, and then kind of calls out specific strategies that the town might want to consider. We have a kind of a transportation connectivity map that we put together that shows areas where the town might want to try to prioritize sidewalk investments, crosswalks, trail connections, sort of trying to create a connected network of open space trails. We have another one for the future land use map that talks more about where you might want to focus different land use decisions within the community, based on the feedback that we got. So, there's five of them in total, will kind of be little mini inserts into the chapter that draw special attention to some of the topics that a lot of people are talking about throughout the process so far. And people will see those on the 15th at the public meeting.
Any other questions?
Wow.
Great.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you to the committee for all of their hard work, and keep it up.
Thank you, Eric.
Next, we have another update for our annual audit, and so, I guess, Lynn, if you want to. Gentlemen, how are you?
Good, how are you? I'm Frank Sorelli, I'm a partner with Powers &amp; Sullivan, the engagement partner on the engagement.
And I'm Kyle Lauren, I'm a manager with Powers &amp; Sullivan.
And Richard Sullivan is also with us too, who's the concurring partner on the engagement, does a lot of stuff behind the scenes, makes sure that we cross all of our Ts and dot all of our Is, keeps us in line. Well, thank you for having us tonight, we're happy to be here to present the results of the 2017 audit to you. We had a similar timeframe for this year's audit, as we've had in the past, we were out in early July completing our preliminary work. That time, we're looking at things like the budget, debt, the grants, we do our transaction testing, we try to get as much done then as we can, just to try to get a head start for year-end, and just helps us out down the road. Our year-end audit work was in the middle of September, and at that time, we're wrapping up any loose ends we might have had from our preliminary work, and we're completing all of our year-end audit procedures, and we're drafting the reports that you have in front of you today. I'd also like to thank the town manager, the assistant town manager, the finance director, treasurer collector, and the rest of the, the finance team for all the cooperation and assistance that we received throughout the course of the audit. Everyone was very cooperative, all of our questions were answered, the information that we requested was provided to us timely. And as usual, we got a great audit package, we request a lot of information before we get out here, and that is taxing on your staff, because it's above and beyond, you know, their normal, you know, daily workload of what they need to do, so they fit it in. And we really appreciate the fact that they do put together a great package for us, it makes the audit go really well from our standpoint. So, the audit did go well. The overall results of the audit were that we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, that's the best you can get. It's a clean opinion, means your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, and they're in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. All reporting deadlines were met, the information that was provided to us was accurate, and we received timely responses, like I said, to any questions that we asked. And there were no internal control issues that we need to make you aware of, such as significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We did have some comments that we put in the management letter that we'll talk to a little bit later. We, as part of the audit, we test transactions, we test transactions on the revenue, the expenditure, the payroll, accounts payable, and journal entry cycles. And what we found when we tested the transactions is that proper approvals were in place, that transactions were coded properly on the ledgers, and that the supporting documentation was, was good, there was good, strong supporting documentation to substantiate the transactions that were there. So, there were no issues that came to our attention, no concerns that came to our attention as a result of all that testing that we did, so that was really great to see. As far as significant audit areas that we look at, cash is always a significant audit area, you had $63.3 million worth of cash and cash equivalents on the books. One thing that we do like to see with cash is that it gets reconciled every month on a timely basis. Due to some of the turnover that you've had in the treasurer's office, that didn't happen as timely as you would like it to happen during the year. But, the good thing is that by the time we came out to do the audit, all the reconciliation work was caught up. And when we went through and audited all the month's bank statements, we found the reconciliations, excuse me, to be complete and accurate, and we were able to verify all the reconciling items, and we're able to prove that all the reconciliations worked, and that everything was tied out, no issues. And so, at the end of the day, the controls over cash are still functioning the way they should, and my understanding is that now the monthly reconciliation procedures are back in place, and that the accounts are being reconciled by the second week of the following month, each month, on a monthly basis. So, that's really good to know. Receivables, you had about $9 million of receivables, mainly related to tax liens, water and sewer user charges, and highway grants. Your real estate and personal property tax receivables were about $826,000 at the end of the year, that's the lowest they've been since 2011. Your property tax collections were about 99% of your commitment, which is excellent, that's a great collection rate, so your collections are going very well. Your OPEB liability was $63.6 million. In 2017, you started implementing a new accounting standard, GASB 74, and its sister standard is going to get implemented next year, GASB 75. So, this is kind of an in-between year, where you've got the GASB 45 liability on your books, and then you have the GASB 74 liability in your notes, and you require supplementary information. That can be a little bit confusing, but next year, you're going to be, you know, have the two similar standards together, 74 and 75, and everything is going to match up a lot better. But, in effect, if 75 did get implemented this year, instead of having a $63.6 million liability on the books, you would have had a $108 million liability on the books. You contributed another $300,000 to your OPEB trust, leaving you with a $905,000 balance at the end of the year. So, you're continually, continuing to add to that fund, and you're adding, it seems, higher rates from year to year. I understand that you've developed an OPEB committee to start studying how you're going to fund the OPEB liability, and, you know, the best way to go about that, and we're, you know, very happy to hear that you're doing that. And having a funding plan in place would be a good thing, as far as the liability and the discount rate that you can use, and any other changes that you're thinking about. Those should all, you know, bode well towards trying to lower that liability and get it under control, and hopefully, you know, get it funded someday. Your net pension liability was $58.1 million, that was a $4.3 million increase over the prior year. You're part of the Essex Regional Retirement System, and the Essex Regional Retirement System was 51% funded, as of the last evaluation that I saw, which was dated 7/115. Your long-term debt is at 6.6% of the budget, and 5% to 10% is generally considered to be a good level, so you're right within, you know, the level that you, you want to be for your debt levels. You're able to maintain your AAA credit rating, which is great. You've also received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for, since 2012, which was the first year that you submitted both of those, to both of those programs. The 2017 CAFER has been submitted to the program as well, and we anticipate that you'll receive the Certificate of Achievement again for 2017, so that's a really good run on that, and that's a prestigious award in the financial circles, so that's a nice thing for the, the town to have. And to get into some of the, the financial results, your budgetary results for the general fund were strong, you had a revenue surplus of $2.1 million. The biggest element of that was your motor vehicle excise tax, your building inspections and your tax liens were also large factors in that. Your appropriations had a $1.2 million surplus, the majority of that was due to the money that you've saved in employee benefits. And you've also turned back some money in your public safety line item. I mean, these operating results indicate to us that you, you have a structurally sound budget, and you have good budget controls in place. That doesn't happen unless you do those kinds of results, so that's really good to see. Your fund balance for your general fund, your fund balance totaled $24.6 million. $555,000 of that was restricted for debt service, $5.2 million was assigned, of that, $353,000 related to encumbrances, and then, $4.8 million was free cash that was voted to fund capital in FY '18. That left you with $18.9 million of unassigned fund balance, and then included in that is your stabilization funds, which totaled $6.8 million. And you've got $4.4 million in your general stabilization fund, $930,000 in your capital stabilization fund, a million in your OPEB stabilization fund, and $407,000 in your special education stabilization fund. When you take those out, that leaves you with unassigned fund balance for your general fund only, of $12.6 million, which is about 14% of your budget, a little bit under two months' worth of reserves, operating reserves. And your free cash was certified at $9.7 million, and, you know, that's about 10% of your budget. And so, you're, you've got healthy reserves, don't think they're excessive, I mean, most of the AAA communities that we deal with have at least 10 to, you know, 10, 15, maybe even 20% reserves, and it just gives you a lot of flexibility in terms of the things that you can do with your capital plan, and, you know, if something unexpected happens, you can weather a storm, if there's a downturn or something like that. So, you're in a good, strong financial position. To get into the enterprise funds, water operations, your fund balance was $5.2 million. That was an increase of $1.4 million over the prior year, charges for services exceeded the budget by $977,000, and your appropriations were $354,000 under budget. Sewer operations, your fund balance was $4 million, that was an increase of $715,000 from the prior year, charges for services were $380,000 over budget, and your appropriation, you had an appropriation surplus of $243,000. Osgood Hill Enterprise Fund, fund balance total $433,000, that was a $31,000 decrease from the prior year. Your revenues were $42,000 under budget, and your appropriations, you had an appropriation surplus of $5,000. Those are the things that I wanted to highlight on the financial statements, and then, after that, I was going to quickly go through the report on federal awards, and then the management letter. I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of the financial information before I move on, or? No? Okay. So, the report on federal awards, that's required for entities that expend over $750,000 a year in federal funds. The town expended $2.1 million, so you qualified for that, that audit. $498,000 of the funds you spent were for school lunch and breakfast, and then, $1.6 million was for education programs, and you had another $5,000 for highway safety program.
How much was for school lunch?
School lunch was $498,000. We ended up testing the special education program as a, as a major program, that means we have to go through specific compliance requirements and make sure that they're doing everything they should be doing, and that the money's being spent on what it should be spent on. And as a result of, of all of our testing, and we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on compliance with the program requirements, we had no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, and internal control were noted, and there were no findings or questioned costs that were reported. So, again, this is another clean report, this is the best results you can get for this report, so that was also really good to see. And it's consistent with prior years, too. You've had clean reports in terms of that, they do a good job of managing all the compliance matters related to it. And that takes us to the management letter. I always like to start off by saying that this document is, is critical in nature and doesn't highlight the things that are done well. But, there are some things in here, there's some progress that was made that I think is a very good reflection. There were three prior year comments included in here. Two of those are in process, they're either in process or have been fully resolved. We also had two new comments that we introduced this, this year, and two informational comments. But, to just quickly go through the prior year comments, there was a comment in there to improve the timeliness of the cash reconciliation procedures, which we already talked about a little bit. Didn't happen during 2017, but after year-end, it, they did get caught up, and I think from that point on, that issue is going to go away, and that shouldn't be an issue in next year's audit, from what I understand. The next comment was implementing a POS system at the Stevens Estate. My understanding now is that that system has been installed, and that it's ready to be used, and that it's going to be used for the functions coming up this April. So, we're happy to see that, we're looking forward to, you know, some of the, the benefits that are going to be... that are going to be derived from that, better controls, better reporting, and we're hoping that the town sees some benefits for the investment that has been put into that. There was also a comment related to strengthening internal controls at the Stevens Estate. There was a recommendation to utilize a couple of standardized forms, one for the cash bar that would be signed off by the bartender and by the manager who was working that night, just to have better documentation of what went through the cash bar, and then also a standardized form just for cashing out at the end of a function at the end of the night, and that form would be signed off by the person that's cashing out. And so those two things were put in place, and those are considered to be resolved. As far as things that are still in process, there's been an issue up there where they accept personal checks for the open bar, and some of those personal checks have bounced. And so last year when we were up there, they talked about a procedure that they were putting in place where they were going to require people to give a credit card number with a personal check, and that way, if the check bounced, they had recourse, they could just put it on a credit card, and so be it. But when we went back up there this year, it seemed like they did a one-eighty on that and decided that they weren't going to do the credit card, but now I understand that they've gone back to saying that they're going to do the credit card, which we think makes sense, because we did see another, at least one check that bounced while we were up there doing a site visit this year. I don't know if it was more than that, or...
I can't recall any more.
Okay.
Yeah, there was another instance where that occurred during the year.
Yeah. So, and to us, that seems like it would be a good solution, and from talking to the finance director, it sounds like they're back on board with that. So hopefully, that procedure will get put into place. And then there was another comment recommending that the booking report, which is an Excel spreadsheet that's used at the town to kind of summarize all the fees associated with an event are entered into the spreadsheet, and then the payments are entered into the spreadsheet, and it's a way of controlling and tracking to make sure that they're collecting money for all the services that they've provided at the event. And so we were just recommending that that booking worksheet get reconciled to the event folder is basically where they write down all the services that they're to provide. And so that is something that still needs to be implemented, and they're expecting to do that in 2018, so hopefully, that will be resolved next year. And then for the new comments, there was a comment in there related to late payment of, late payment of payroll taxes, where the town did have a late payment and was assessed a penalty, and we recommended that procedures be put in place so that there's a check and balance to make sure that the tax payments go out on time. And from what I understand now, there's been a new, a whole new procedure put in place where this is now, the payments are now being made electronically on the federal website and the state website, and they're being made a day before they do, and they're getting a confirmation from the website when the payment is made, so that they have something in hand to prove that these payments have been made, and that's being done before the warrants are processed. So it sounds like there's a good procedure in place now that should prevent that from happening again. So I'm happy to see that that procedure has been put in place. The next comment related to reconciliation of performance bonds. The town has a very large amount. They have over four hundred performance bonds on the books, and this has been the case for, I think, several years, a number of years. And the performance bonds relate to the Highway Department Planning and Conservation. And it's just a lot, there are separate bank accounts set up for each one, and then the treasurer has a master spreadsheet that tracks all of these in detail and reconciles the balance to the bank balance. And that spreadsheet is also reconciled to the general ledger, where that information is maintained on a summary level. And so those reconciliations, that was something else that fell behind in 2017. My understanding is that those have now been caught up, and I think all but three of the four hundred have been fully reconciled at this point, and the other three are going to be reconciled soon. And so they've actually developed some new spreadsheets that are going to facilitate that reconciliation process and make it a little bit smoother, and I don't think that that's going to be an issue going forward either, now that you've got a good team in place and good procedures in place.
You said that that was a lot.
What's that?
How does that compare to a community of a similar size to North Andover?
I would say, I mean, I typically don't see, like, over, like, fifty performance bond accounts, and sometimes it's even a lot less. Yeah. North Andover, for some reason, has many more. And so the next part of this comment was just a recommendation that the town take a look at those performance deposits and determine if the projects have been completed, and if the projects...
So is that the case, that we don't actually, they could have been completed, a substantial chunk could have been completed, they're just still on our books?
That's quite possible, because I think some of those have been there for a long time.
And so they're just, our treasury department reconciles it monthly?
Yeah.
Or reconciles each one of those four hundred accounts monthly?
Yeah, I mean, there's not a lot of change in the accounts.
But still, they have to go in and keep that record?
Yes.
Because otherwise, they would not perform well. So it's just that added layer? Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I wanted to understand.
Yep.
It's really, you know, in the process for discharging them, and what the timeframe is, there's a lot of old ones out there, so it's probably should have been discharged or, I mean, we just need that brought to the table.
Yeah, it might be the town's money. If the project wasn't completed to satisfaction, the town may have gone in and completed the project, at which point, they don't owe the money back to the contractor. The town really should recoup that money and take it in as revenue, or it could be the other way around. But I would think if you owed a contractor money and they did the work, that they would have came looking for it.
So what's a typical process?
When I was on the planning board, we were regularly releasing ones, so I don't... So what would you recommend, I mean, there's so many. So what would be your suggestion as to how we handle this and get those numbers down? I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot.
It depends, I mean, but I think it really takes a look at the four hundred and tries to parse out...
The easy, the low hanging fruit.
Because planning and conservation have to be voted by those boards, or they can't be released. I can tell you, certainly in a decade, we haven't done work on behalf of contractors. The question is, first, sort of delineating the, by age, how many are twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years old, and then getting to the smaller ones who go back to conservation and planning to see if those, you know, and then what the sort of legal rights are of dollars sitting in conservation and planning bonds, which haven't been requested by those particular vendors, and what our rights are in terms of...
Shouldn't it almost be a self-releasing system in a way, right? Because these are contractors that you would think would want... What's the total value of all four hundred of those performance bonds?
Oh, gosh, I don't have the value in front of me. I think it's in the management letter. I want to say three million.
Three to four million.
Yeah.
And again, it's just sitting in an account that adds to your workload as a depart, well, yes, the entire financial department, but specifically the treasurer's office, right? I'm sure a treasurer loves, loves that one.
I didn't know what escrow's were until I came to you.
So what would be, I don't, I actually, you said you were going to make recommendations anyway, so I, I'm sorry, I keep jumping.
And that was the recommendation, really, is to just take a look at those and try to determine if the projects have been completed, and, you know, if they're, if the money is owed to the contractor, or if it's town money, it could be one of the two.
So, so right now, by keeping it on the books, it's work for the treasurer's department would really, I mean, the treasurer's department can't confirm...
It's almost a part-time job, just that.
Whether or not these, this work's been done, I mean, we're looking at these other departments to step in and...
Well, I think the first step would be to evaluate them and break them into buckets, right? So one, who's the responsible party, and then two, two from that, from that, to break those down further. So going to planning and saying, okay, here's your outstanding ones. So it's probably going to take us about a year or so to break those down into more manageable buckets. In most cases, the larger dollar values, if they still remain in the project holder, that means that the site contract may very well, if it was a subdivision, said, the work that I'm required to complete costs more than the amount in the bond, and I'm going to move on, in which case, we, you know, I know that we had a couple of those. But I think, I think the goal of the treasurer's department will be to break these four hundred accounts into more manageable buckets from a description point of view, and develop a plan for how to start to make four hundred look more like fifty rather than four hundred over some time. But four hundred bank accounts, a lot of banks.
Just a lot, I imagine, tedious.
Yes.
And after that, we just had a couple of informational comments. One, we kind of already touched on, the GASB-75, and that's just that sister standard that's going to get implemented next year, and recognize that full hundred eight million dollar liability on the books, which everybody knows about, but it's going to be on the face of the financial statements instead of in the notes. And then there was another informational comment related to the Uniform Guidance, which is guidance that's put out by the Office of Management and Budget, and basically sets the rules for how you audit federal grants, and set, also sets like the different compliance requirements, the things that you must do to comply with the federal requirements related to it. The Uniform Guidance came out a couple of years ago, and one of the requirements in there is that you document your internal controls over federal awards in accordance with the COSO framework. And so this is an informational comment that we have in all of our clients' management letters. To be honest, I haven't seen a completed document yet, but we've been working on a template in-house to try to assist our clients with it, and we just, we're really close to having it to a point where we're going to be ready to release it, and we think that that's going to help a lot with developing this. But it's just something that you should have to be in compliance with this requirement of the Uniform Guidance. And that was what we had for the presentation.
Just a, I mean, I know the answer, but there's been a little bit of talk amongst some of our people that are involved in the finance of the town, that the town is really in very bad shape because of the post-retirement benefits. And I would argue that that's not true, but I guess I'd like you to comment on that. Where do we stand, and how do we stand in comparison to some other communities?
I think that you're probably in the middle, maybe, maybe even a little above the middle, just as far as, you know, developing a plan. Like, you guys seem to be getting a lot more serious about your funding the trust, you've been doing that. So I'd say you're probably even a little higher than the middle, maybe, you know, sixty, seventy-five percent, somewhere in that range of people that are actively addressing it and starting to fund it, developing a plan. You know, there's different plans out there. Some, some of our clients, their plan is to wait until pension is funded, and then to take their pension appropriation and use that money to fund their OPEB trusts. You know, others are trying to do, like, some percentage of their free cash each year, and when their pension's funded, then they'll put that money over there, too. And so it's kind of different for each community, what makes sense to each community from a funding standpoint, what can you afford, and, you know, what other cost savings measures can you come up with to try to manage the liability? But I don't, you know, think that North Andover is in a significantly worse place than, you know, many of your peer groups out there right now. I would say you're probably in a pretty similar place, because most communities are just starting to fund, and they're just starting to come up with plans, and there's a few out there that are, you know, farther ahead of that, and there's a lot of others that are quite a ways behind that. And so I think when the rating agencies look at you, they obviously gave you your AAA rating. They're comparing you to your peer groups, and right now, you're probably, you know, pretty much in line with your peer groups, is what I would say.
So you don't see this dark glooming cloud over us?
Well, it's a big...
I mean, we have a responsibility, but you don't see any, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you don't see any serious concerns in the immediate future that this town is going to be in big trouble because of that?
No, I don't see that. It's a, it's a big liability, and it's something that I think, you know, makes sense to start planning, and that you want to fund it, you don't want to push it off further than you have to. I think you want to do what you can to fund it and to control the costs, and, you know, the awareness that all these new standards have raised, I think, are good from that standpoint. People are aware of this now, they're thinking about it, it's on the forefront, and I think this is the time to be making plans and strategizing and how you can deal with it. And, you know, the more you can do now, the less burdensome it's going to be in the future. If you do nothing, it's just going to continue to grow and grow, and it's going to be much harder to contain. And so, yeah, I think the sooner you do something, probably the better. And, you know, you, once you start funding it at a certain point, you can get a higher discount rate, which is going to significantly reduce your liability. And so I don't know if you guys have brought in your actuary yet, but you might want to bring in your actuary, because you can, you know, maybe to one of the finance committee meetings or something like that, and, you know, you can, the actuary can run different scenarios for you, like, if we, you know, how much would we have to put in to get to a certain discount rate, and what would that discount rate do to our liability, and what would it do to our required funding each year? You know, if we changed our planned contributions from thirty-five, sixty-five, and we went all the way down to fifty-fifty, what would that do to our liability? Or if we went, you know, to somewhere else? There's a lot of different scenarios and things that the actuary can do, and they can give you, let you know what the numbers will look like when you make those changes. So that could be something that could be worthwhile to try to, you know, help with the strategizing and the planning and how you're going to try to address it.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that a lot of communities, all communities kick this can down the road regarding OPEB. And they've all been kicking it.
There's a couple, like, well, yeah, there's a couple like Wellesley.
Yeah, I was going to say Wellesley, the W's, yeah, as I refer to them.
Brookline is another one.
Which passed an override to fund it, just, so...
Yeah, they're different.
There are lots of ways to do things, and just...
Wellesley likes overrides.
So just...
North Andover generally does not.
So we got to find that money.
But I just wanted to put it in context, because when it comes to OPEB in general, it sounds like a lot of communities have had to grapple with this, and I, we, the message we've heard is that we seem to be doing a good job, but relative to our neighbors. We've all procrastinated with doing our homework, some of us have just finally started to do it, but it's still all due very soon for us, right? So I just want to make sure we're not walking away from here with the message that, no, no, we're in good shape, we don't, you know, we don't need to do anymore.
No, I think that you're doing the right thing by establishing this OPEB committee and trying to come up with a plan to fund it. And, yeah, it's definitely a huge obligation, and it's a serious, you know, obligation that you want to get under control, and you want to try to manage it. And so, yeah, it is serious, and I do think that, you know, what you're doing is the right thing.
But we've made some considerable efforts in the last few years to get some of that done, particularly with the, with our health insurance.
Moving on to the GIC.
But I think that's a really great idea, though, if you bring in some actuaries that kind of can outline some different scenarios, and maybe set some goals or set some priorities for us to work on to further address it. It sort of gives us a clearer picture.
I think what you were specific to is, so we do have an actuarial study done every two years.
And I was about to perform, I was about to say, not that the town manager has ignored this, he has not, nor has the board, nor has the finance committee, but it's, I think some of the talk was just a little bit scarier than, you're right, it's serious, every town has to deal with this, but there was a sense that, gee, we were going to be closing the doors pretty soon, and I don't think we're anywhere near that.
No.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I enjoyed it.
No, no, I think what Frank was specifically referring to is we have an actuary that does an every-two-years study to determine the OPEB liability, so it'd be logical for that. I thought that had happened, but I think, did the actuary speak to the committee?
He's not yet.
Not yet.
But that's scheduled to be part of the OPEB committee, will speak to the actuary, and that'll be part of the evaluation process for development.
We're still going through what questions to ask and how to ask them.
Sure, there's a lot of questions.
So there's one, so that we don't yo-yo the guy, right?
Yes. Yes, and that'll happen anyway, if you'll ask a whole bunch of questions, and you'll need to invite them back after.
Well, thank you for your honest response, and I think it's something that we, everyone at this table is very well aware of, but I think we're chugging along with it, and thanks to the town manager and letting me, we know we got to pay our bills.
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Colonel, you're good, thank you for looking at your guide, and by the way, I'm the town manager, so congratulations on your, your great report every year, and I think you will fall through.
Thank you. Thank you.
So that about does it for communications that are on our agenda. I'll move it to the floor. I don't know if the town manager or any of the selectmen have items that they wanted to bring to each other's attention or the public's attention, or?
Mr. Chair, you know that public works for a new building open today, to the public?
We did hear that.
So, full-service facility, walk into the front door, and everything is right there at the customer counter.
Yeah, it was nicely designed. I did like, I liked that they were all together in the pit.
I heard you were pleased.
It was great, it looks good. And I made some recommendations on picture frames, and other than that-
I heard that, too.
They can put all the pictures of dump trucks and plows and whatever on the walls or whatever they want, but, no, it was a nice tour, and it, I believe the staff did a great job in choosing the colors on the inside. It really looked great, really, really looked great.
Good job, Ray.
Thank you.
On time, under budget, maybe, or?
Not this one.
Not this one. Sorry about that.
Are you taking the on time or the under budget?
Both.
Never mind, Ray, not good job. No, it doesn't go.
A little bit like Portus.
A nice project.
Close.
Contaminated soil did a set.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. So if you took that away?
Oh, if you took that away, under budget, but not on time.
Well, thank you for your hard work on that, and for the folks at DPW who had to really work around-
I know.
-that, so it's a little bit chaotic, that's for sure.
We did put them in another building, yeah, they did. They did a great job, you did a great job. Thank you very much.
Any other announcements? Hearing none, we can move on to our consent items. And the first item under consent was a request of Vivian Hader, treasurer collector, to increase fees for the municipal lien certificates. So I'm eager to hear about municipal lien certificates, and we have Ms. Vivian coming up.
Good evening, everyone. I haven't really met any of you, so, hello, I'm Vivian Hader.
Our town treasurer, right?
Yes, I'm your town treasurer collector. Excited to be part of this town. We have a good team down there, we've been getting a lot of good things done, so pretty excited about that. And as, just coming up on my six months, I was reviewing, we're reviewing everything, really, in the office, and one of the things that I was discussing with the team is, I was, when I looked at the price we charge for MLCs, I noticed that among all our, most of our community neighbors, we're much lower. And I thought it might be a good idea to send, submit this memo to say, what if we increase it? And this increase would be two different rates, similar to what a lot of other communities do, which is one for residential and the other would be for commercial or industrial. So I was proposing increasing our rate today, which is $35, to $50 for residential, and then it would move up to $100 for commercial, whereas today it's 35 across the board. We do about $1,000, and of that $1,000, around 900 is residential, and about 100, so 10% is commercial. So, you know, it could be anywhere of a revenue increase from anywhere $20,000 to $25,000, depending on how many we produce that year.
So Vivian, I may be the only person up here, we need to know this, but municipal lien certificates?
Yes. What are they?
What are they? And what exactly, what does the fee represent?
When you sell your house, when you sell your house, in order for you to get your financing and close the deal, you have to have a clean municipal lien certificate. So they come to the town, make sure everything is paid, but you do-
So-
Typically, it's the lawyer.
The attorney's the lawyer.
Is that every real estate transaction?
No.
It's not an actual lien.
No. It's a document that they label that, so it is misleading just by hearing the word lien, but what happens is, it's typically almost always from the attorney for the closing of-
The buyer's attorney.
Buyer's attorney. They send in a letter with a check to us with the property address and parcel ID, and we go in and do a search in our system to make sure, do they owe any taxes, is it a tax title, do they owe any water, any liens associated with it? And we produce that document.
So how much would you estimate that cost to constitute that? I mean, so there's obviously some work to be done there, and then there's documents to produce. So, I mean, does $35 cover that effort that people have to do?
So they are, so I take those certificates seriously, because if we issue an error, that's a legal document, and my signature's on it, and they bring it, and they actually, you know, register at the Registry of Deeds, so because of that, you know, that's why it's not rushed, and we have by statute 10 days to turn it around. So I don't have an exact number of how much does it cost us, but it is something that we take seriously, and we don't just rush through it.
I think I'd like to see what it does cost, because we're really not supposed to charge more for a fee than it costs to deliver the service.
I can tell you it takes more than an hour, and Vivian's hourly rate is north of the number being proposed.
Okay.
And just so the public knows, of the list in Vivian's request here, which I do support, she's listing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 other communities of those 11. 10 of those 11 all charge the $50 that's being recommended for the residential rate. Typically, this is picked up by closing costs, in the sort of closing cost number. And as relates to the commercial, the rates really vary of those 11. Some charge as high as $200, some 150, several 150, some 50 in fairness, and some 100. So it doesn't seem, the reason this was forward to you is that Vivian's request seems very consistent with our peer group, hasn't been changed in a long time, and certainly from a fee perspective, the cost in producing these things is, we're not doing full cost recovery as relates to the fee charge.
It would bring us in line with Andover and Haverhill, and it would still make us less on the commercial side than Methuen, substantially less than North Reading, all communities that we border. Do we entertain a motion?
Chair, I'll take a motion. Move for a second, change the fee for residential municipal lien certificates from $35 to $50, and for commercial municipal lien certificates from $35 to $100.
Selectman Valencourt made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Nobly. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. Thank you, Vivian, for your hard work and for coming this evening.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Nice meeting you all.
Nice to meet you as well.
So we have before us a request from the Youth and Rec Council. I don't see Mr. Kevin Driscoll here, but I do see Mr. Gorman, who has been patiently waiting with some big news.
We're once again before for the selectmen to approve us holding the carnival again. This will be our 28th annual. We have an agreement, obviously, with Aussie Properties, and $1,600 is good to continue to hold it down there the last weekend in April, and we are asking the Board of Selectmen to approve us having this and to waive the fees associated with working with the departments to put the carnival on.
28 years, right? It seems like we just started like 10 years ago.
Been a long time.
It's been a long time.
Do you still recruit Carrie Crouch to go and work it?
Carrie Crouch is no longer in the last two years, but she was there for the first 26.
We're lucky to have her.
Yeah, she was. That was her baby.
Thank you.
I would move approval with a letter of thanks to Aussie Properties for again-
Yes.
-doing this for the town, working on it.
Great, thank you.
Motion made by Selectman Spadili. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Valencourt. Any discussion? I get to be reflected that we would send a letter with this motion to the gold scenes, thanking them for-
Motion to move away from the fee.
Yes, thank you for that. I'll take that friendly amendment.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion on the table? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none. Thank you to all the volunteers and staff for making that weekend happen.
And lots of sunshine.
How much will you raise for them typically?
We expect you all to come down and go on the Ferris wheel or something. Hopefully, you know, our goal is between $10,000 and $15,000 that we can make over the four-day periods. We've got a couple of creative things with the vendor to, you know, try to get it up a little bit more, but, you know, it's become a little bit of a turnkey operation. It's an easy way for us to make that kind of money, which supports us on some of our summer programs. So it's just been a, it's a great thing for the community. Wish we had a site that was a little more centrally located, but as you know, obviously, when we used to have the sites at the high school and the middle school and the accident school, there just isn't any space anymore. And Aussie Properties came to our rescue about 10 years ago now, and it's obviously a great place to hold a carnival. The problem is it is on the outside of our town. So we're going to be working on some creative things, actually have some shuttle service from the middle school for our kids to get down there if that's, we're feeling that's a little bit of an issue, so we're going to work on that.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And thank you to the volunteers who make it happen, again.
I'll stick around for the next one.
Yeah, so we have, the next item on the agenda is to accept the following donations from youth sports groups to be used for new fields and facilities.
Just real quick, this is an annual for our newer board members. This has been going on since 2010. As a way to try to raise some money for future field projects, we proposed something in 2010 where the youth groups charged an additional fee to their registration fee that would be then donated each group, and that's North Andover Soccer Association, the Lacrosse Association, the Boosters Club, and North Andover Youth Baseball. And every year, they vote again to be part of the project, and since 2010, with this year's donation, we will have turned over $376,000 to the town. This is a great collaborative effort from our youth groups. It allows us to have much-needed money to take looks at different fields and facilities. We actually changed the title a few years ago to Slash Facilities. The process goes that if we were to try to want to propose to expend some money, the board, the Fields Committee would need to vote on this, and then it goes to DPW Director Jim Stanford, but ultimately, the town manager has the control over spending that money. It has allowed us to take a look at different projects we've built, and as you've seen, we've built some nice new projects that we've been involved with this, with this program we have. And obviously, both the town manager and I are very excited about the future of the middle school project, and I'm sure some of this money will help towards that, too.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll move for a selectman to accept the donation of $3,390 for North Andover Little League, donation of $6,000, oh, cross name, $6,500 for the North Andover Little League, donation of $10,090 for North Andover Booster, and the donation of $21,820 for North Andover Soccer Players. For use for the town's new athletic fields and facilities, and hopefully a letter of thanks from one of the board members.
Motion made by Selectman Valencourt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Nobly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
And a letter of thanks to all those groups, as I know you know.
Thank you.
It's just nice to say publicly.
And I've got one more.
So, we have a donation from the North Andover Cultural Council to the Youth and Rec Services in the amount of $1,000 to be used for the children's shows and concerts that you hold on the Common each summer.
So we've been trying to do creative things over the last few years to get money to pay for our children's shows, which are Tuesdays and Thursdays during the summer on the Common, as well as our very popular Sunday night concerts. The major funding for that is our great Sunday nights public skating program we have with Brook School, which concluded last night. That is a 30-year relationship that Bill McAvoy started with Brook School, and we finished last night, and that money goes directly into the fund to help with the children's shows. We also have an annual appeal to our businesses to help sponsor the concerts, and that usually goes out in April. And this year, we were asked to apply to the Cultural Council, and we received a $1,000 grant, which is the most you can receive from that grant. So this will, again, obviously, support probably two concerts on the Common, and where the cultural concert will be the sponsors of those concerts we do. So obviously, we're very appreciative of the Cultural Council giving us $1,000.
Great. That's very generous of them. Entertained a motion? Motion made by Selectman Valencourt.
And I'll second that.
Motion made by Selectman Valencourt, seconded by Selectman Spadili. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Thanks, Rick. That's it for that. Thank you.
Good triple honor.
See you in a few months.
Yep.
Stevie's gone.
So we have a final item under consent. We have a vote to sign the warrant for town election scheduled for March 27, 2018. This is an item that we do each year. Ms. Bradshaw, would you like to approach and educate us on this?
It's just a procedural issue to have you sign it, so we can have the constable post it, and we can move forward to the election on the 27th. Just a reminder that March 7 is the last day to register to vote relative of the annual town election. We will be open until 8:00 PM, and if anybody needs, and absentee ballots, as soon as they're available, we will post it on the website so that people know they can come in and vote in person if they need to, or we're happy to mail them absentee ballots. They do have to apply every year for them. That's just a good reminder, so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Joyce. Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Move for a selectman to accept and sign the warrant for the town election on March 27, 2018.
Motion made by Selectman Valencourt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Spadili. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Joyce, and enjoy the month.
Do you have something for us to, you've got the big one?
So that is it for consent items. I would hear a motion to move into licensing.
I'll move to open the meeting of North Andover Licensing Commission.
Motion made by Selectman Nobly to move into licensing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Keane. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Licensing.
First on the agenda is a request from Vincent Grasso of Auto Spire LLC, request for class 2 license at Trinity Commerce Way. Mr. Grasso, would you like to move on to the bottom?
I started a youth group 28 years ago called TeenCo, and I gave Rick Gorman his first interview in town. So I always like to tell people I hired Rick Gorman. My mother would argue with that, but-
You were one of the teens that interviewed him, that's good.
Yeah, I was the president of TeenCo. Nowhere am I selling used cars.
Well, even teens need-
Just trying to get some supplementary income at the property. We have a ton of space there, it's not being utilized, other than detailing and washing cars.
So what is the proposed additional?
It's just a used car license.
Oh, used car?
Yeah, yeah, it's a class 2. Yes, we have nothing but space there, just-
So how many cars are you going to?
Six. He said six to eight. Yeah, six to eight cars.
It was four to six.
Four to six. Four to six cars. Yep.
Okay, and then police fire and building?
Everybody signed off on it, yes.
Yeah, no one can really do with it. So you'd just be putting them on the lot, probably 125 in that area?
Yeah, we have space inside as well. It's more of a recreational thing for me, just to kind of stay on the property and keep busy.
Okay, and everything else seems to be in order? Any questions from the board? And I'll, do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Folks, have a great night.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have multiple requests from Merrimack College for little licenses for events at the college. I'm going to do each one of them. There's a concession for men across the football field, and these are wine and malt There is a concession for men across the football field, and these are wine and malt licenses on March third. The concessions at the Rogers Center are also on March third. Concessions for performance at the Rogers Center on March eighth, and again, lacrosse football field on March tenth. There's three more. Concessions for the performance at the Rogers Center is on April twelfth, concession for performance center on Rogers Center on April thirteenth, and on April fifteenth, so seven is spoken.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
What dates for five, six, and seven? What days of the week are those? Twelve, thirteen?
I got it by the year.
Yeah, and the other two are from Thursday, Friday.
See once a year.
Okay.
But they're all, yeah, they're all internal performance at the Rogers Center. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those of you who are going to minutes?
I'm sorry.
Are you voting on this?
Uh-
I asked for all those in favor. All votes.
Thank you. Sorry, asking for questions, I'm going to address-
Okay. That's it, we, that's how we have the license tonight, so I'll hear a motion to move out of licensing.
Mr. Chair, I motion to move out of licensing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. We are back in our general meeting, and we have no old business, any new business? No.